Okay, so we're going to call the town meeting to order. We do have microphones here, so can you hear me? So anybody who will make a comment tonight, please wait for us to run a microphone over to you. Our first order of business is to elect a moderator. Are there any nominations from the floor? Brian Fitzgerald has been nominated as moderator for this town meeting. Do I hear a second? Second? All in favor? Okey-dokey, motion passes. Brian Fitzgerald, you're our moderator. Okay, the legal notice that was posted in the Journal Inquirer notices hereby given that a town meeting of the inhabitants of the town of Suffield, Connecticut qualified to vote in town meeting will be held in the auditorium of Suffield Middle School 350 Mountain Road on Wednesday, October 10, 2018 at 7:00 PM for the following purpose to wit: To prove a five-year lease to the town only and located off North Street, the Roseburg property, to Sunny Hill Farm; B, to approve the expenditure of $67,368.81 from the Town of Suffield Open Space Fund to purchase development rights to the Darren Farm; C, to approve the acceptance of abandoned portion of Lake Road as a town road; and finally, to approve a fiscal year 2017-18 budget transfer dated at Suffield, Connecticut, this fifth day of September 2018 by the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Suffield, Melissa M. McPherson Selectmen, Tim Reynolds Selectmen, Joanne Sullivan Selectmen, Mel Shafitz Selectmen,
I'll ask that our first order of business is to please stand and we'll have the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The administration is informing that there are some technical difficulties here with their point presentation, so if they're trying to correct that, but while they're trying to do that, if we're going to continue with this, it would be better if we start with item number four on the call than item number one. But I need a motion to start with item number four on the call. That's item to approve the fiscal year 2017-18 budget transfers. And we can get going with that hopefully by the time we're done with that, which needs little point presentation, the technical difficulties will be solved and we can go on with the others. Everybody understand that? Okay, I need a motion. Bobby Kling makes that motion to start with item number four on the call. Do I have a second to that? Seconded, okay? Everybody understand the motion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, we have, we'll go to item number four on the call. We'll have the first selectman. Well, let's first of all get that one on the floor, okay? Do we have someone to move item number four on the call of the meeting?
Resolved that the town meeting of the town of Suff-- pardon? You can't--
Put it right up your mouth. Right up to your chin.
Like an ice cream cone? Resolved that the town meeting of the town of Suffield approve a transfer of $313,697.41 from the 2017/18 fiscal year contingency account to the police department payroll
Do we have a second to that motion? Second it over here. All right, now that we've had a motion, we're on item number four on the call, let's see what the administration has to say about that. First selectman?
Good evening and thank you for your flexibility in accommodating our technological issue. I direct you to slide number 32 in your presentation. To repeat, we're going to transfer $313,697.41 from the 2017-18 fiscal year contingency account to the police department payroll account. This is to cover police officer increases due to settling their union contract which expired four years ago. So basically, we have four years of compounding salary increases that were required to be absorbed primarily in this fiscal year. We paid retroactive police pay over two fiscal years, including 1718 and 1617. And again, the compounded salary increases over four years could not be absorbed within this one fiscal year without this transfer. This will impact the 1718 contingency account only, so the current fiscal year is untouched. If you move to slide 33. The reason why we are here having to approve this at town meeting is because our town charter provides that any transfer of funds which will result in an aggregate transfer during any fiscal year in excess of 1/4 of 1% of the total current annual town budget to or from any one account requires a town meeting. And so that's why you are here today. And so again, if you look down at the chart in front of you, you'll see that the police payroll overage is 313,697.41. The total annual town budget for last fiscal year was $55,669.264. So the payroll overage is .56%, which is greater than 1/4 of a percent. So that's why we are here today. If you look to the next page, you'll see an overview of some more details with respect to the police department, total expenditures for the police department. Police payroll overage is listed in the first item. We've done this as a comparison, not to the total budget, but for your informational purposes, to the general government operating budget. So that excludes capital and the board of education piece of the total budget. So the police union total compensation, 2.3. The police union 1617 retro pay, again because of the police union contract that was settled that we paid in 1718, was 136,447. Police leadership dispatch, support staff, total compensation. So that's everyone except for the patrol and the lieutenant who are in the union. Everyone else who helps operate our police department in the town, 711, 711. And then the police operating a budget, so cruisers, bullets, miscellaneous apparatus, et cetera, that's 299,571 for a total of 3.456, which is 22.75% of the total general government operating budget. Just a couple added details of what goes into all of that. I want to note that we have to move, from any one account to another account, we have to approve the entire transfer. And so the total overage for payroll was 313,697. However, I do want to point out that the total overage for the entire police department budget was only 309,463. But you can't move from operating expenditures to payroll. And so I want to give them the benefit of the 4,000 that they didn't overspend. And just additional detail for the amounts paid for retro in fiscal year 1617, we paid 110,495.36 in that budget as well. And so that's kind of just a little information about why we are making this transfer. At this time, I'm happy to answer any specific questions on that information before we take the vote. Any questions? Can you please state your name and your address for the record and speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you, please?
Jack Henry, 12 Fesent Lane.
Thank you.
The total, the police department expenditures, does that include the payroll overage or not?
Yes, it does. Yeah, that includes the payroll overage. It includes everything that is in the actual police department budget plus other items from other budgets in the town. For instance, insurance premiums, medical, dental, short-term, long-term disability premiums, 457 plan, matching contributions, et cetera. So the full, we tried to capture the full expense for every department and that's what we're showing there.
So the total should be the total of the five items above it, but it's not?
The total should be the total of the four items above it because the 313 is already counted.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Six, seven, eight.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. I think we're ready for the vote.
A reminder, we're on item number four on the call. A few things about, we're going to open it up for debate after the administration makes its presentation, which it just did. We open it up to the floor for debate or discussion or any comments that town meeting members wish to make. I would ask a couple of things, though. First of all, identify yourself, if you're going to make any statement and your address. Also, keep your remarks, please, to the item on the call of the meeting and on the situation we have, and try to avoid personalities. Okay? With that in mind, I open the floor for any town meeting members to express any comments on item number four on the call. Do we have any comments, suggestions, debate on item number four on the call? Seeing no hands, are you ready for the vote? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The motion has passed unanimously. Item number four on the call is approved. Are we ready on item number one?
No, we've got technical issues.
Okay, let me, okay. So if it's all right with you, we would continue. They're still having technical difficulties with the PowerPoint. And so if it's all right, can we go to item number three on the call? Let's have a motion on that, that we would, again, and we're in reverse order. Item number three, it's been moved. We have a second? A second, okay. All in favor of now entertaining item number three on the call indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. We are on item number three on the call. Item number three on the call is to see what action the town meeting will take on the approval or acceptance of the abandoned portion of Lake Road as a town road. Does the administration have comments on this item on the call?
I think I have the resolution. Kim was going to--
Okay, we've got to have the resolution on the floor.
So resolved that the town meeting of the town of Suffield accept as a public road the section of Lake Road, aka Colony Road on some maps, extending approximately 965 feet from Copper Hill Road as recommended by the Board of Selectmen and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, that is the motion. Do we have a second to that motion? We have a second it over here, Bobby Kling. All right, now we have the motion and the second. Now, do we have advice or determined by the, we're going to have the town engineer speak to this. Jerry?
Hi, I'm Jerry Terbit, the town engineer. If you turn to page 27, or I don't know if it's in a separate handout, there also should have been a separate handout too, which has a little more lengthy explanation in it. But I'll start at number 27 and it's, I'll also point out that some of the things I'll be referring to will be on the two pages that follow 27, which are maps that actually show the location of the road. Okay? It's a section of Lake Road that extends 965 feet from Copper Hill Road. It's a .18-mile gravel through road, 28 feet wide, that accommodates two-way traffic. And it's in a separate parcel, which actually is shown on the map that follows the description here. The parcel's about 60 feet wide. It abuts the 74-acre parcel that's owned by the operator of the gravel mining site that's out there, subject to a special use permit. Lake Road actually continues through the gravel mining property and actually it was relocated as part of that operation about a year ago. In the fall of 2017, the owners of the mining property, actually at the town's direction, made road improvements, including widening, grading, and filling. Also, there were a number of trees and vegetation that was cut to actually widen the road. And this was really done to address residents' concerns about the effect of having the regular traffic go through along that road, which is a very narrow road, and having that with difficulties in dealing with the trucks coming out of the gravel pit. So that was why the road was widened. It was brought from about, the actual road was about anywhere down to 14 feet wide, and it was so narrow that actually in a lot of cases when two cars came along, especially when there was a truck in a car, a vehicle would have to turn off to the side on that and let the other one through. So the road was widened, it was actually widened at the elevation of the existing road, which is a fairly narrow, was a fairly narrow road, and it was widened out to about 28 feet wide, which actually is probably wider than a number of our town roads on Acceptance says a town road permits, would permit the town to improve the road surface by applying millings or paving in the future. It also would allow drainage improvements to be made if they were needed. This was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They do a Section 824 report on any road that is up for acceptance. And it was approved at their August 18 meeting, and it was approved by the Board of Selectmen and sent to this meeting at their September 5 meeting. If you look at the following sheet, that's number 28, you'll see there, this is actually, this was actually a property survey that I had a surveyor do to show the limits of this property. And as I indicated before, it's 965 feet long. It borders on the back of a number of lots on Woods Hollow Road, which is the road that is shown at the top of that sheet with the little cul-de-sac there. The gravel pit or the gravel mining area, the 74-acre piece, is really over in the area by the north arrow, and that's the one that the road continues. And then to the south is property of William H. Wilson. There's a seven-and-a-half acre, 7.3-acre piece. And this road extends from Copper Hill Road. The next sheet is a plan and, oh, the other thing I'll say about this sheet is, this sheet actually, in addition to the property lines, it showed what the original road width was. It's shown in the middle, and you can see that's fairly narrow. I mean, it's hard to see scale on something as small, but it was relatively narrow, that road. In addition, it had a lot of trees and vegetation on both sides of it, which made for difficulty in actually traversing. The next sheet shows, actually, I also had the same surveyor go back to this road after it was completed and actually do both a plan of what the actual road looked like in terms of its size and also the centerline elevations of the road, and also actually the topography of the road and the area near it. Initially, this road, the narrow road, was at a certain elevation. It was widened about that elevation, I guess almost doubled in width. And then there was a slope that was constructed on the south side of that which abuts the Wilson property and that. And the bottom part is the profile, which shows the centerline of the road and that. So that's pretty much it for the road. I will say that on some of the older maps, they did show this road as, if I can remember that, they did show this road actually as-- Colony Road is actually also, and that's why it's shown as, also known as Colony Road, because some of the roads, the old maps showed that. But the action tonight would take this first section of the road in its, with the property lines as indicated and the road as indicated. The other thing is, as far as a question about whether this would fit suitable criteria as a town road, actually, all that's needed for a town road is that it has an all-weather surface and that is actually, that it actually allows two-way traffic on it and it is not blocked, it's open. And that would meet the requirements. So you can actually have a gravel road approved as a town road, and we still, we may still have, you know, some footage of gravel roads that are town roads. But anyway, so that's my presentation. If anybody has questions, I'd be willing to answer them.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yes.
Richard Will, a good point to be made. I think you mentioned that, that's 28 foot width, not a requirement. What is the minimum requirement, what is the minimum requirement for a normal town road acceptance?
Well, if it's a new subdivision road, probably the minimum width road that's allowed, and in fact, it's actually, would be required for roads like cul-de-sac roads, would be 24 feet curb-to-curb.
24 feet curb, and is there additional easement taken?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, so it's more than just the width of the road surface?
That's right. You're taking a road within a property, and in the case of this road, actually, the width of the right-of-way, if you want to call it that, is 60 feet. The width of usually a town road will be, the standard is 50 feet.
Okay, that's what I thought. I guess in the spirit of full disclosure, I'm also living on a private road, not accepted by the town. So I'm wondering if we do this, do we set any kind of precedent for not meeting those minimum requirements, the 50 feet? Be careful how you answer, because my next question's going to be, accept my road.
Well, actually, I mean, any, this actually, in terms of the right-of-way, actually exceeds the town requirements. There's no problem, the requirements are really minimum requirements as far as the width. Now, again, this is for subdivision roads. You can have private roads that, you could have a private road come to a town meeting and be accepted as a town road.
Without meeting those minimum widths and minimum easements?
It could happen, although you really would probably not want to get into accepting roads that really are extremely narrow. I mean, if you have a road that's 12 feet wide, you know, the right-of-way is 12 feet wide or 15 feet, you probably wouldn't want to accept that because you can, you really can't fit two-way traffic on it really, very easily.
Well, jumping to, thank you for answering that. Jumping to the next section, which is going to be comments, I'm going to vote in favor of this because I think you're doing the right thing with this area, and I think it's a promise you made to the people that live behind that too, so thank you.
Item number three on the call, do we have any other questions or, yes, sir?
I wonder if there's a way of making this without all the booming. I'll try to speak clearly. It was my understanding that the operator, it was my understanding that the operator of the sandpit was the one who did the work to make this road a more acceptable road. Will he continue to maintain it, or does the responsibility now devolve onto the town?
Okay, the question is about the operator of the gravel sandpit maintaining the road and will they continue to do that? Let's see what the town says.
The gravel pit is operating under a special use permit from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And actually, one of the conditions of that permit is that the operator of that pit, that he is responsible for doing maintenance work on this section of road, actually. And it's, that has been, for all the time that there's been gravel mining operations out there, that has always been a requirement there, and it is a requirement of their current special use permit.
That's for the record. Yes, ma'am.
Susan Herbert, 712 North Street. So why are we accepting it? If he is going to continue to maintain it, why does the town have to accept it?
Did you understand the question? Why are we doing this is the question, if they're going to do it. I think we have, we have more from the town, including the town attorney.
Sure. I'll start out just by saying, you might know the history of this road. This was the subject of a lot of anxiety for the residents who live over in and around the sandpit operation. One thing that became abundantly clear to us at the beginning of the operation, that this particular section of road was not safe. And so we did the right thing as far as the town goes. We widened it, we cleared trees, we made sure that if there were trucks going in and out, projected at the volume that was projected at the beginning of the operation, which I am pleased to report, it has not come to fruition. I think the volume of trucks that we expected in and out has not come to fruition. But of utmost importance was public safety. And so that's why we knew that this property, this 950-plus feet, was abandoned, and we decided to make improvements to it for the public safety. And so that's piece number one. And now, go ahead.
Also, Derek Donnelly, I'm the town attorney. When it comes to the private roads, the Board of, the first selectmen and the Board of Selectmen have discussed a strategy to start incorporating some of those roads into the town as town roads. This is sort of the first step in that because this is very much the low-hanging fruit there. Most of the other roads are owned by an association that cares for it, or perhaps private individuals who bear the responsibility for it. But in this particular case, because the road was essentially abandoned, and at one point in the early '80s, the owners of it attempted to donate it to the town. At the time, the town would not accept it, and lo and behold, that corporation that owned it no longer exists anymore, and we have this section of road that essentially has, absent the special use permit, has no one to care for it and maintain it. So looking at the longer-term strategy of incorporating some of the private roads into town roads, it made a lot of sense to start here because it was the low-hanging fruit. town roads, it made a lot of sense to start here because it was the low-hanging fruit.
Further discussion, item number three on the call. Yes, sir. We'll send the mic over to you.
I guess I have the question is, the town meeting voted not to accept the property from the people that used to own the property. Is it, would it be more appropriate for us, as a town, now to accept that property and then approve the road? Or are we accepting a road on a property that we don't know who owns it, or is this going to end up being the same? Because right now, it's a piece of property that's not owned by anyone. It's an abandoned piece of property, from my understanding, and I would think would be appropriate that the town approve, accepting that property, and then accepting the road. Are we ahead of ourselves here?
Let's see what, town attorney, go ahead.
I think because, I see your point. I think the problem here with this particular piece of property is the property is the road, and the road is the property. There's not, it pretty much goes to the edges of both of the property lines, right, Jerry, with a little exception on the hill there?
Wow, great.
Right. The problem is, there's no, it's tricky from a legal perspective, what we, how we would take the property itself, because essentially, what you'd have to do is try to find a corporate, this is actually a trust, that, a corporate trust that owned the property out of Rhode Island, that disincorporated in Delaware sometime in the 90s. So in order to take property, the town needs to provide notice, we need to appraise the property, we need to put that money in escrow with the court in order, you know, if the party doesn't exist. It's a long, drawn-out process. Essentially, there's no way of resolving that process here. We did have an appraisal done, we have a market value of the property. If it were ever, if someone ever raised the issue of how much the property would be worth, we could fight that out in court. It's a very small sum of money. Basically, its highest and best use is this road. But what the town can do is incorporate surface roads, and there are many standards in what makes a town road and doesn't make a town road, but I'll tell you this, this particular piece of property, as with many of the parcels that we'll be dealing with in the future, because of how the town treats them, because school buses drive across them, a number of other factors, they are, for all extents and purposes, town roads. So by, we play, we have played a game in town for decades about calling things private roads, and then doing maintenance on them, and directing that they be improved through a special use permit, things of that nature. Essentially, what we're doing now is making those games that we played right. These are, these are town roads, and we're starting that process. And part of the, part of the reason to do that is, we either start doing that as a town voluntarily, or we're forced to by people taking action in court.
Right. And just, pardon me?
years, and no one has listened. And now it's time that we listen, that we gather information, that we survey the residents that live on these roads and see what they would like. We figure out if they need to have an assessment of some sort to bring these roads up to where they should be. People who had my position in the past made decisions that have impacted those roads and that will impact the decisions we make today. You know, my predecessors, if they had a mother-in-law that lived down certain roads, decided to plow those roads. Those, that ship has sailed. Now we need to make things right, and we need to do what's right, and we need to treat our citizens fairly. It is as simple as that. And at the end of the day, if we pave those roads and they become town roads, that value We are doing that. I can assure you that there's a lot of work going into this.
And if I could, the width, I'm sorry.
that we've added in those houses will be reflected in their assessed values, and so the money will come back to the town over time. Go ahead.
If I could, the, as Jerry discussed before, the width of the road standards that we
But right now, we are doing things inconsistently, and we need to make things right.
have have to do with cul-de-sacs, they have to do with new subdivisions.
Well, I think that that's something that we will do, and that's why we're analyzing
We don't have, you're correct in saying that we don't have standards for the smaller roads that already exist. The problem is that, you know, the legal standard in Connecticut has nothing to do with whether or not the road is a certain width. It's what the town does and how the town treats the road. So Melissa alluded to plowing. If the town is plowing a road, a court is going to tell you, that's a town road. If the town, if a school bus traverses the road to pick people up, the courts are going
the situation. This was, again, a matter of public safety, and so it had to be done.
to say, that's a town road. And there's a variety of factors that come into play there.
We got the work done by the sand pit operator without spending a penny of the town's money,
And that's what, the problem, what we've been up against.
other than a survey.
We've said, you know, and you're absolutely right about how the town meeting has acted in the past, we've said, listen, we can't accept Griffin Road as a town road because, you know, of the width, or we can't accept Griffin Road, you know, because, because it's owned by an association, whatever. There's been a number of factors that people have pointed to over the years. We've been very lucky that those have not been challenged, those, the results of those meetings have not been challenged in court, because, you know, in my opinion, and the opinion of many other attorneys that we've consulted, we probably would not be successful. And that's, that's the problem. So I, I see what you're saying completely about, you know, do we set a precedent? Are we, you know, are we going down a dangerous road? In one sense, yes, but the flip side of that coin is, we're not going to have the opportunity, if we don't start addressing this issue, we're not going to have the opportunity to set minimum standards, because those roads are going to be forced upon us, and then we're going to have to act, you know, we're going to have to be reactive to it instead of proactive. So, you know, this is a, this is a delicate situation. First Selectmen's pulled together, you know, a number of town employees and myself to start looking at a longer-term plan to start incorporating more roads into town roads officially. Again, this seemed to be the most logical starting point because of, A, the public safety concerns, B, the factor, the fact that this property was abandoned as opposed to owned by an association, and three, because it really was, when the sand pit operation went through the appellate process, that the title to the road became a question for the residents in that neighborhood behind it, off of Colony Road, Lake Road there. And we wanted to address it right away to make sure people had access, full access to their property and always had access to the property. By making this a town road, that does that. Now, I will say one other thing. You're absolutely right. Does this open up the parcels off of it to development? Sure, absolutely it does. It becomes a town road, you can develop according to the guidelines in the zoning. I think that's our 25, 45? Yeah, it's our, the R-45 regulations over there, so. But again, it's a deli, you're absolutely right, there, you know, it's a slippery slope to go down, but, you know, what I'm, what I, my advice to, First Selectmen, my advice to you all is that we're heading down that path, whether we want to or not, with respect to the private roads.
So again, to go back to the sand pit issue and the key points that came away from that, one was the public safety issue, but as Derek pointed out, the second was that our residents that own homes off of Lake Road had permissible use to use Lake Road from the cannons. Many of their deeds do not contain an easement to their homes. So we have people that might go to sell their homes that might not be able to sell their homes. The town, the town needs to help its residents in this, and so that's what we're doing. It's the right thing to do to help the people that live off of these roads. Go ahead, Mr. Burrell.
You have a question for her?
No, I just had a question for Derek. A year ago, roughly, in this room, we had a meeting that the First Selectwoman emceed very carefully, and you indicated, Derek, you were going to start proceedings to take ownership of that road. It sounds like you have not done that. Is that correct?
Correct. We started down that path and quickly determined that the company did not, no longer existed.
Yeah, I thought you had mentioned some procedural form that-
Correct.
Having found that, that there was no owner, you could go ahead and take ownership of it somehow, but apparently that didn't work.
Well, what we determined was that it was easier, more cost-effective, more productive, and frankly, the road issue being really the paramount issue, the ownership of that property, the property itself doesn't essentially matter if the town, if it's a town road, if that makes sense.
Oh, okay. I was just afraid that if we accept this, and some corporation comes out of the woodwork and says, oh, by the way, I own that.
Right, which is why, which is why we had it appraised-
Okay.
And we, we know the value of the road as, at the present day, so if ever that occurs, we have a backup plan in order to adequately compensate the owners. But again, we've gone through a significant, and, you know, for the record, that parcel appraised for $4,000 on two different market surveys. It's not, we're not talking about an exceptional amount of money, and it would have been far greater of legal costs in order to go through the process in the court, pay that in, essentially have it held in escrow by the court for a number of years, and we felt this was the most productive, efficient, and cost-effective way to take care of it.
And in addition, the first thing I'll do is, when that owner comes forward, is say, you owe us back taxes on that property. So let's just call it a wash, and we're done. So again, those are the reasons why this was the most fiscally responsible path to take, and it's the right thing to do. So any other, any other questions on this topic?
Well, your memory is absolutely correct from that meeting.
Further discussion on item number three on the call. Further discussion? Everybody understand the question? Okay, are you ready for a vote? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Item number three has carried. We'll go now to, let's see where we are on the technical problems. We're good now, so if it's all right with the body, we will start with, back to item number one on the call. Okay? All right, we'll be back to item number one on the call. Is there any action on item number one on the call? Yes, sir. Seconded? All right. Item number one on the call. Does the administration of the town have any explanation of item number one on the call? The town planner.
Looks like we're up and running here. Best part is, oh, that's not the best part. I get to use the pointer. I was pretty excited about that. So leasing the town-owned farmland. The town has about 10 acres of farmland on North Street. For those of you that have been around a while, you may know it as a part of the old Roseburg Farm, so we call it the Roseburg Property. Sunny Hill Farm, which is a Suffield farm, had a lease for the property, which expired this year, and the property is used to grow hay, they use it for their horses. Sunny Hill Farm seeking a second five-year lease term. Financially, the lease rate's $20 per acre. Over the course of the lease, it's $1,000. It's not a lot of money, but the real reason for doing this is not to make money, it's to have a good steward on the property. It's a highly visible property, and I'll show you a map in a second. And they do a great job, you know, with the upkeep, and, you know, we're promoting agriculture, so all good things with this. The Board of Selectmen approved a five-year lease extension in March, but, you know, why are we here? Well, the town charter states that if the aggregate of lease, all lease terms exceeds five years with the same entity, town meeting approval is required. So we're seeking the second five-year term with the same entity, so that's why we're here tonight. Here is a map of the property, outlined in red. North Street, Route 75, right here, Farmstead Lane, on the right-hand side. So it's, I'm sure everyone's driven up the road. See in the back of these houses on Farmstead, it's that area in between. Another point of reference, if you're familiar with the Zira Equipment Property, they have about 50 acres, that's right to the south here. So that's the 10-acre piece. Really, that's it. This is the resolution. We're asking you to take action on tonight, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Further discussion, item number one on the call. Anyone have any questions, discussion, debate on item number one on the call? Seeing no hands, are you ready for the vote? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion has carried. We, motion, item number one on the call, has passed. We will now proceed to item number two on the call. Item number two on the call. Do we have any action on item number two on the call?
I'll read number two. Mr. Hill had to leave, but the, resolve that the town meeting of the town of Suffield authorized the expenditure of $67,368.81 from open space funds for the purpose of purchasing a conservation easement known as development rights from the Darren Farm, consisting of 43 plus or minus acres located off Hill Street, Halliday Avenue. Further resolved that the First Selectmen is authorized to sign and execute all documents necessary to complete the above transaction.
Do we have a second to item number two? Seconded by Bobby Kling. Okay, does the town authorities have anything to say on this? Yes, town planner.
These are the really fun parts of town meetings, in my opinion, farmland preservation. The Darren Farm is our next project. I've got a few slides that go pretty quick, I think it's about 20 or so. So this is, the property is about 43 acres, is located on Hill Street. I have a couple of maps. If you know me, you know I love a good map. Later on in the presentation, but this is just a view of the property from Hill Street, newly paved Hill Street. Here's a view of Suffield farmland. Part of that is actually preserved, the Leahy Farm up in this area, Remington Street, Mountain Road, right there. But why do we do this? Why do we say farmland?
Mr. Hill had to leave, but the resolve that the town meeting of the Town of Suffield authorized the expenditure of $67,368.81 from open space funds for the purpose of purchasing a conservation easement known as development rights from the Darren Farm consisting of 43 plus or minus acres located off Hill Street, Halliday Avenue. Further resolved that the first selectman is authorized to sign and execute all documents necessary to complete the above transaction.
Do we have a second to item number two? Seconded by Bobby Kling. Okay, does the town authorities have anything to say on this? Yes, town planner.
These are the really fun parts of town meetings, in my opinion, farmland preservation. The Darren Farm is our next project. I've got a few slides that go pretty quick. I think it's about 20 or so. So this is, the property is about 43 acres, is located on Hill Street. I have a couple of maps. If you know me, you know I love a good map later on in the presentation. But this is just a view of the property from Hill Street. Newly paved Hill Street. Here's a view of Suffield farmland. Part of that is actually preserved, the Leahy Farm up in this area, Remington Street, Mountain Road right there. But why do we do this? Why do we say farmland, open space, forest land? There's a number of reasons why we do this. Here's a list of reasons with regard to natural resource protection. Farmland is a natural resource. You know, its preservation promotes the town's heritage and character. I always like to point that out because if you look at our Plan of Conservation Development or Open Space Plans, talking about preserving our heritage and character is always one of the top items on any list in there. So there's a number of other reasons. Developed land has far more negative long-term implications when compared to open space preservations. And you can read the rest there. There are several reasons. These are some fiscal and economic reasons why we do it and why it's a benefit to the town. It's a tool for growth management. Oftentimes, the alternative to preservation for a landowner is residential development. We see that all the time here in Suffield. You know, local agriculture contributes to the local economy. That's important. And farmland generates more in taxes than it uses in services and that's important. And this graph really sort of demonstrates that from our Cost of Community Services study. And essentially what it is, is we looked at the overall town budget and calculated the median cost per dollar of revenue raised to provide public services to these three different land uses. And what that means is, open space generates more in taxes than it uses in services as you expect, you know, the police, fire, there's no schoolchildren on farmland when you compare it to residential development, which is generally a loser when it comes to this. And my guess is, you know, these numbers are from 2012. We should probably update it because I'd be interested to see over the past few years the change in this graph, given the amount of money that's been spent recently on roads and paving. Those are the reasons why we do it and now how it works. It's a pretty simple process. When I'm talking about farmland preservation, I'm talking about purchasing development rights to a property from a willing landowner. So the town and the State Department of Agriculture, they pay a one-time fee to a property owner to preserve their property and they sell their development rights. It's also known as a conservation easement. The terms are sort of interchangeable. And essentially, the end result is, buying the development rights prohibits any non-agricultural development on the property. And what happens with the property? The property remains privately owned. It stays on the tax rolls. Two very important points. The town doesn't own the property or responsible for maintenance on it. You know, purchasing the development rights does not preclude the farmer from selling it. But when they do sell it, because the development rights are gone, it can only be sold for agricultural purposes. So the price that is asked for must reflect that. It keeps farmland affordable for future generations. How we got here, it starts at the local level. We have an open space subcommittee and this is a sheet that they use to rate different parcels that come before them from people that are interested in farmland preservation. We have some folks on there that have been there for a long time. They know properties in town. They do a great job. And this has worked well for us. We have 18 properties on the list. Not everybody on the list is ready to move ahead. Mr. Darren was the next highest rated and ranked person on our list, which is why we've been working with him for a while now. I should also point out the Department of Agriculture, who is the major partner in this, also has their own rating criteria and they looked at Mr. Darren's farm as well. And it fit their criteria well. Here's one map that shows all the preserved farmland in town. The Darren property is pointed out here. Here's Hill Street, Halliday Avenue right there. I'd just like to point this out because we do have a lot of preserved farmland in town. The next map shows all open space, but you really can't see it, but maybe you can. There's about nine lots right here on a property that directly abuts the Darren Farm. And that was approved for those nine lots just recently, within the last year and a half. So I just point that out. There are development pressures in the area. That'll be nine lots on a cul-de-sac road, all the infrastructure that the town will be taking over. So farmland preservation is important from that perspective. Here's another map. Again, Darren Farm pointed out, this shows the farmland that's been preserved as well as privately owned open space, the Suffield Land Conservancy properties that are this yellowish color. They have a few hundred acres in town. The state of Connecticut owns a lot of property, the town, much of which is undeveloped. And again, this is just to show you how much managed open space there is in the town of Suffield. So when we purchase development rights to farms, the money comes from our open space account. And this slide shows you the sources of those funds. Largely it's from the town's annual budget process. Also in 91, the Planning and Zoning Commission began accepting fees in lieu of open space as a condition of approval for certain subdivisions. And that fund has built up over the years to about $274,000, which goes into this account so we can use it to buy open space like we're doing tonight. So to the tune of about 4.5 million over the course of, well, since 1999. In terms of the account summary, if approved tonight, there would be about 836,000 left in the open space fund to work on other projects that the town has. And it's just the simple math of it, the 4.5 that's been put into the account, less what's been spent on other projects and farms that we've preserved over the years, less what we're here tonight to discuss. And this slide, I like this slide, especially for that first number. We've leveraged over $10 million in state and federal funds to preserve all of the properties that we have worked on here in town. The town's cost, our share of that cost is less than 30%. We've preserved about, close to 1,400 acres since 2001. And it's estimated, you know, we have a lot yield calculation and I look at all the properties and estimate approximately how many lots could potentially be subdivided. On that 1,400 acres, approximately 663 homes. Maybe not that much, even if it's half, 330 homes on all of that property. If you think about the cost of roads, school-aged children, other utilities, that's a big So I mentioned the open space subcommittee. There are other groups involved that get us here tonight at the local level, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, the State Properties Review Board, and of course, the Connecticut Department of Agriculture have all unanimously, I should say, approved this project to get to this point and to approve the funding. Here's an aerial view of the property outlined in red. About 43 acres. Mr. Darren's residence on Halliday would be combined with the farm. So that's to ensure that there's always a house with the farm and the farmer that's living there. So the Department of Agriculture likes to do that when they can. Few pictures. I, full disclosure, I did not take these pictures. One of the appraisers did, but just a couple of views to give you a sense of the property. It's used to grow corn at the, currently. View of the field. I like this one especially because of the dog, one of Mr. Darren's dogs. I hope he's okay with that. We didn't get the rights to his likeness. Very nice dog. I met all of them. This is the breakdown of the total project. So the total cost of the development rights is 269,475. And as I mentioned, the state's our major partner. They're 75% of that cost. They're contributing 202,106 to the project. We're here tonight seeking approval to spend the town side, the 25%, 67,368.81. It's a pretty good ratio for the town. And here's the resolution that you're asked to take action on tonight. And of course, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. If there are no questions, I believe the first selectman wants to say a couple of things.
Now the first selectman.
Thank you. I just, when we're doing farmland preservation, I just want to always personally thank on behalf of the Town of Suffield and its residents and its taxpayers, the farming families that are selling their development rights. Because for all the reasons that you just saw and for preserving the beauty that is Suffield, I want to personally thank you for going through this process. So thank you to the Darren family.
Okay, we open it up to the floor now for any questions, discussion on item number two on the call. Yes, sir. It's coming. Here comes the mic. Hopefully it works well.
Lester Smith again, the same place. Haven't moved yet. Two things. One is, I'm curious, the state is helping us make this purchase. Does the state become a shared owner of the development rights that we are protecting? All right. The other question is, our town plan of conservation and development includes a goal for a certain fraction of residentially develop, developable property in town to be preserved. What was that goal and where do we stand on that now? Thank you.
Got two questions. Do you want to answer?
Yeah.
First one is, what does the state do with development rights? And then the second one is, how far are we in our goal?
So the first question is, yes, the state is a partner with us on this. Their name is on all the documents and so they have 75% of the development rights, I guess, if you look at it from that perspective. With regard to your second question, the goal he's talking about is, I think from the 1999 Plan of Conservation and Development was to forever preserve 55% of our residentially zoned land in Suffield as open space. Based on my calculations and looking at this and what I've told the Planning and Zoning Commission is, I believe we've actually exceeded that. Now, 55% of our residentially zoned land is 13,500 some odd acres. Much of it is considered wetlands. So I took that acreage into account. So in any event, I believe we're, we've just exceeded it by a little bit. I'll also point out that our open space plan from a couple of years ago sort of amended that language and said to preserve a minimum of 55% of our residentially zoned land because we knew we were getting close. So we're going to keep going. But to the question, the answer is, we've exceeded it.
Further discussion, item number two on the call. Seeing no hands, are you ready for the vote? There's the item on the, on the call, including the further resolve. Okay, so that's the town, so that the first selectman can work on authorizing. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion has passed. Item number two on the call is passed. Is there any other item that should come before this town meeting? Seeing none, I am ready for a motion to adjourn and dissolve the town meeting. So moved, seconded. All in favor of adjourning and dissolving the town meeting indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned and town meeting is dissolved.